Well, hello, hello, ADNC family. Emma Ansa here, coming to you live on this hump day, the middle of the week. We're getting there, we're getting towards the end of the week. Hello, Israel Yishay, I hope all's well with you, shalom, shalom. And I hope all is well with everybody. And for those that are in the United States, we know that Thanksgiving is coming. I think it's tomorrow. So for those who choose to celebrate it, I hope you have a wonderful time with your family, your friends, and you eat yummy food, and just fellowship, and all that good stuff. Over here in Canada, we celebrate it, well, I don't celebrate the day, but it was celebrated in October, so we're like a month ahead of you guys. But anyhow, anyhow, anywho, today's topic, a very important topic, we're talking about anti-black racism within the Toronto District School Board. The Toronto District School Board is the largest school board in Canada, with 600 schools and 239,000 students across those schools. It's also one of the largest school boards in North America, so it's fairly big. And within this school board, there is plenty of systemic anti-black racism. So we are going to talk about that today. And we're going to hear from a student who is going to speak on her experience. We're going to hear about other forms of anti-black racism within teachers being targeted, as well as a teacher being an anti-black racist as well. So I'm going to, I'm giving you a bit of everything to just give you a sense of what really goes on here. And by the way, the Toronto District School Board isn't the only school board where anti-black racism runs rampant. There's also the Dufferin Catholic District School Board, there's also the Peel District School Board, so it, and it is countless, countless cases of it. But before I get into more conversation, let me just say hi to Renz as well. Afternoon to you, thanks so much for joining me. And we're going to hear from this sister that's going to talk about, as a student, what, you know, she's trying to do, and what's really happening. So let us take a look and we'll talk further.
Studies found that black students in the Toronto District School Board face greater academic hurdles.
I said, my research specifically looks at black girls. The teacher responded, what is it with these girls? Why are they so aggressive? Why are they so angry?
PhD candidate Olivia Bernard says she experienced this when she immersed herself in a high school in the Black Creek neighborhood from 2021 to 2022. She also found that more low-income job courses were geared towards students in low-income neighborhoods.
A teacher said that they kept pushing for gifted programs to be at the school, Black Creek High School, and they were receiving pushback, saying, we're not offering that.
Professor Ahmed Aliimi at U of T also conducted a study that found anti-black racism and Islamophobia persist in Rexdale High Schools after interviewing dozens of black and Muslim former TDSB students.
Being seen as Muslim women, oppressed, hijab, and so forth, the males were seen as sort of terrorists, looked at a particular sort of way.
But he and Bernard believe there are solutions, including hiring more black teachers and improving anti-black racism training for TDSB staff.
Better anti-racist training guides as well, so not just having something for you to watch or spending a day to deal with this, actively dealing with it on a daily basis, on a quarterly basis as well, to ensure that essentially black students aren't exposed to this type of harm.
She would investment in the Centre of Excellence in Black Student Achievement, a TDSB program aiming to improve the experiences and outcomes for black students. The board's anti-hate and anti-racism strategy website reads in part, "The TDSB is committed to developing and implementing a strategy that is responsive to the voices of communities in addressing incidents of hate and racism that continue to take place within the district, and community consultations are ongoing."
All right, so, a few things. First of all, as you can hear, her name is Olivia Bernard, she's a PhD student, and she was saying that they were not willing to give the gifted programs to the underdeveloped, what they, guess what they consider to be underdeveloped? I mean, that's just code for the schools that are heavily populated by black people in black neighborhoods, just, let's just call it what it is. They do not want to offer those programs to those schools. So again, baked in systemic racism, there's no reason why you're not offering it to those schools, you're not offering those programs. And then you heard her also talk about training, et cetera, et cetera. Here's what I have to say about this training. I feel like that's just a bunch of nonsense, because why do we have to train people on how to not be an anti-black racist? And why do we have to train people to teach them how not to be a racist? Why do, does there have to be training about that? Right? It's the most ridiculous thing to me. And, you know, I went to school here in Canada, and I was going through this in the 60s, 70s, 80s. I mean, fast forward to 2025, I'm still going through that. And there are so many black students that stay quiet, because they're concerned that it'll either get worse for them, or it'll affect their grades. So they stay quiet, they grin and bear it, and they just try to get through their school year, or get through, you know, finishing out their school year so that they can move on with their careers. So I say all that because I'm leading to the next story that I'm going to share, which is talking about myself going through it, starting at the age six, the first time I heard the N-word, when I was six years old, and going through it, you know, being mistreated by my teacher in school. So I'm going to play a story of a six-year-old black boy who was going through that in school, another school under the Toronto District School Board. So let's just take a look at that.
This video taken at the Midtown Elementary School shows the closet-sized room where the boy was allegedly detained for more than 30 minutes back in January. The mother claims this incident happened after her son was sent to the office 11 times without her knowledge.
You could see his emotionally falling apart. He would come home crying, and he would say, my head is going to explode, I'm not going to go to school, I hate school, I don't like school, and all that, all the time.
The mother claims her son has experienced dozens of instances of anti-black racism. During a meeting with the teacher early in the school year, the mother says she was told her son was obnoxious, unpleasant to be around, and not smart enough for French immersion. She claims her six-year-old was also belittled by the teacher during class.
He said that, you know, the teacher told him that he's supposed to be in a J K environment, because that's where his intelligence is, or belongs.
The six-year-old boy was the only black child in the grade-one classroom and was allegedly separated from other students and forced to sit alone in the corner at a desk that was scribbled with profanities. After several unsuccessful attempts to resolve these issues with the school's administration, the mother reached out to the advocacy group Parents of Black Children.
Nothing mom brought to us when we first met with her was new. It's systemic.
He needs a lot of support to be able to trust the school environment again. And of course, this will take time.
The co-founder of Parents of Black Children says, since the story started making headlines, the moms of two more black students came forward with similar allegations.
When I spoke to that mom last night, the new mom that came forward, her daughter told her that when they locked her in the room, they shut, they shut the light off. Like, how scary is that for a child?
So this was a six-year-old, and they obviously are saying lies about this child, he's, he's this, he's obnoxious, and all those other things. Listen, he's six, okay? You mean to tell me that there aren't any other six-year-olds that aren't black, that are obnoxious, and maybe don't behave well? The problem I have is that that six-year-old, which the only black boy in that class, was the only boy that was locked in that room, okay? And the only boy that was forced to be separate from the rest of the class, and forced to sit at this desk with profanities written on it, which, by the way, some of those profanities were anti-black slurs. So I am, I am extremely outraged about that, because again, it takes me back to when I was six, and going through the same nonsense by a teacher, belittling me, all of those things, and me being the only black girl in the class. So to see that this is still going on is beyond reprehensible for me. And it's, as I said, inferior, inferior, I can't even get the word out, I'm so annoyed. That's okay, McQueen, thank you for joining anyway, better late than never. Yes, we are brethren and sisterin in every way, yes, Canada and the US are. I mean, the Canadian politics always, politicians always say that the US is like our brother or sister, right? So we really are. And, and, you know, this is why I keep bringing stories like this, because I really want to show y'all that we go through the same thing. It, you know, Canada isn't this warm and fuzzy place. You know, we definitely go through the same things that you go through in the United States. So we truly are brethren and sisterin. So hey, my brethren, Renz. So yeah, so as I'm saying, so this six-year-old is locked in this room, and in the broadcast it says that two more parents came forward, now there's like 48, okay? So there's way more stories of kids this age that are going through this level of anti-black racism, and not only by students, but the teachers, okay? So those, the teachers involved in that were placed on administrative leave. I'm not sure if they are back to work, but it wouldn't surprise me in the least if they were, right? So here's an example of a six-year-old going through it. And as I said, there are way, way hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of black students from all ages that go through it, they're just, they just are reluctant to come forward. But I happen to know for a fact, because I've sat in town halls, and I've listened to their, their stories, I just, you know, for their privacy and security, I'm not divulging it, but I'm telling you, it is happening. Yep, we all have, exactly, corruption and ignorance equally, yep, in our countries, that is facts, that is facts. So I'm going to show another story of this time it being a teacher. A teacher who chose on Halloween to do, what is it that a lot of the folks like to do? Three guesses, the first two don't count. What costume do they always love to either put on their faces, or put on their bodies, right? So this doc, this, excuse me, this teacher chose to dress this way for Halloween. Let us watch. Well, doesn't want to let me add it to the stage. Hang on a second, hold on, hold on. Why are you not wanting to come to the stage? Oops, I'm sorry.
... turned to racism at Parkdale Collegiate Institute when a teacher pictured here came to class in blackface on Friday. Students say the grade-nine business teacher who was white should have known better.
He told students around the school he was a zombie, but it didn't, I don't know, I've never seen a zombie like that before.
That was terrible thing to be done.
Parents say students were traumatized sending photos of the teacher in blackface, adding it took longer than it should have for the school and staff to address this act of anti-black racism after students complained.
I think the bottom line is that he was able to, you know, get through those front doors into a classroom, seen by other adults, and nobody held him accountable immediately.
The school sent a letter notifying parents of an incident of anti-black racism. The teacher was apparently told to remove the blackface painting in the afternoon and is now on paid leave as an investigation is completed.
This is connected to what the TDSB themselves have identified as deeply entrenched anti-black racism within the Toronto District School Board. So this is about the culture of how our school systems are operating.
Yes, McQueen, you guessed it, blackface. So did you, Renz, ding ding ding, you win a prize, blackface. And this teacher, as you heard, taught business, and he's not from Canada. So he's justifying getting dressed in blackface as a zombie. He claims that's what he was doing. First of all, if you're dressing up as a zombie, you wouldn't just wear blackface, right? It would be a whole getup, it would be a whole costume, you know, ripped, and ripped clothing and all that stuff, you know, that whole zombie look. So, excuse me, but that's a crock, I don't buy that at all. But yes, he is saying that he wasn't, he's new to Canada, he didn't really realize the impact of coming dressed as, as, you know, in blackface. But as you heard this woman say, he got through the doors in blackface, he didn't, he didn't go in the bathroom and change into that, he came in, he came into the school in blackface, went into the class, you know, you must, there, there's a teacher's lounge, you mean to tell me that all those teachers and faculty staff just said hello, good morning to him while he went into the classroom and then started teaching? And it took students to come and tell, go to the principal's office and say, hey, this teacher's in blackface, before anybody thought, oh, what? Like, are you kidding me? In any event, in the video it says that he was placed on leave, but he actually was ultimately fired. And now he has an arbitrator who's, is, is, is trying to push for him to be reinstated because he's mortified. And then once he was told to wash his face and he was sent home, he went home, and then he went online, and he learned about anti-black racism in blackface, and he knew nothing about it. Please, you're a teacher, you're a teacher, you mean to tell me you knew nothing about blackface? Give me a break. Even if you go online and look at what does a zombie look like? That's not how he looks, that's not how they look. So it's a lie, it's a lie from the pit of hell, okay? But, you know, they always try to justify that. So you're saying the problem with the folks is they give a blind eye to their wrongdoing? Yep, yep, yep. Like I said, he was able to get all the way through and go into class and start teaching a class before anybody was like, wait now? And it took the students, the students should not have been the ones to go and sound the alarm. It should have been the adults in the room, the adults in the school, those that are supposed to be there to make sure that it's a safe space for students, okay? Exactly, right, McQueen, exactly. That's why I say it's a crock about he was dressing up as a zombie. Give me a break, and doesn't, didn't know anything about it. Oh. Exactly, exactly, exactly. It's the sociological imagination, exactly. Yeah, exactly, different shades of brown, but it's always some black tar thing, right? Or very, very dark brown tar thing that they put on their face. And they go to the extremes, too. No enforcement of the new bills, exactly, and this is what black students face daily, exactly. Shout out to Vanessa St. Louis, thank you for joining. The staff were not doing their job, or, McQueen, they were doing their job, they just chose to turn a blind eye to it. You see, there's that. Because when it comes to the Toronto District School Board, as that lady said, it is deep, deeply entrenched in there. I wish some of these black students would come forward and talk about their situations, because I'm telling you, it is bad, it is bad. What black students are going through in these schools is so bad, okay? It's really, really out of control. Yep, exactly, a lot of them will drop out of, out of school, they will, they'll drop out of school because they feel like, you know what, I don't feel safe here, I don't feel safe. And, and they are, they do face trauma. I know for me, I, I faced a lot of trauma from going to school back in those days with the anti-black racism in the, what I always called the racist province of Quebec. Yes, absolutely. Exactly, if we were to go and put whiteface, what if we showed up in school in whiteface? How far do you think we would get in that school? Do you think, like, this teacher was able to walk all the way through the school in blackface and walk into the class and start teaching and say, hey, I'm a zombie? We would not even get one toe into the school, and let, let alone get even past the corridor. But we know, the reality for us is different, right? So now I want to also talk about the black teachers and what they face as well. There was an article that was published in the Toronto Star, where four black teachers were featured in Toronto Star, which is a very popular newspaper here in Toronto. And in the article, they were talking about teaching, you know, teaching about anti-racism in the school. And some, some of the folks got very, very mad, they were big mad about this article, to the point that they actually wrote some hate on the article and sent it to these four teachers that were featured in the article. So this is the actual article, I don't know why my thing is, wants to give me a hard time. Okay, so this is the article, all right? Now you can't really see what's written, so I'm just going to go ahead and read it for you. So, as I said, this article was about teaching anti-racism in the schools. They were big mad about it, okay? So this is what is written on this article, it says, "The N-words have taken over the system. If you disagree, you're a racist. If a black student fails, the teacher is a racist." What'd they say? No, what is it, hold on, no one wants their beautiful daughter in school with a dumb N-word boy. She doesn't date these, so he's basically, they're basically, if she doesn't date these dumb N-word boys, then she's a racist. And then they said, what N-word B? Time for private schools like the US. So basically, they're saying, the N-words are taking over the school system. First of all, that is so far from the truth, okay? The amount of black teachers as opposed to the folks is literally, there's, it's, it's like 0.05%, like literally. So the fact that these people decided to send hate mail to those teachers, talking about how they're taking over the schools and it's time for private schools, that's good, okay, you take your children out of the school and you go to, put them in a private school somewhere, I don't know, in Switzerland, or where you're all people mostly look like you, you know, and more power to you. But as far as us taking over the schools, that's absolutely insane. But again, I go back to my original statement, which is, the idea that we have to even be teaching anti-racism is beyond ridiculous. But nevertheless, that is what, you know, a lot of the schools are doing now, didn't have it back in my day, I don't know that it is effective, because it hasn't changed anything. In fact, it's, it's worse than it was back in my day, with no, no training, no anti-racism courses. Yep, but let us, exactly, yep, blackface. The educational system in Toronto is full of, yeah, it, it's a lot of anti-black racism going on in these schools, full of it, it is overwrought with it, it's terrible, absolutely terrible. Black teachers and principals that care, give our kids the attention and help, they, yes, it's true, they really do, because they know what it is. And I'm pretty sure those black teachers also experienced it too, right? So the question begs, what does one do? What do we do to protect our, our children when it comes to the anti-black racism in these school boards? Because as I said, it's not only in the Toronto District School Board, it's the Durham Catholic District School Board, it's the Peel District School Board, it's many, many school boards where the students are going through this. And as I said, they don't want to talk about it, they just want to get through the school year without, you know, unscathed and, you know, just grin and bear it. And it's very, very difficult to do, I can't, like, I know for me, it was difficult, you know, but back then, you can get away with doing some things to make sure that that doesn't happen, and my father did what he had to do, okay? Because my Ganian father was no joke, all right? But for me, I think part of the, the biggest solution is to have schools that are owned by black people, with black students, black teachers, black faculty, black everything, where our students are safe, and with people that look like them. So we don't have to deal with that, that's the first thing, that's, I think that's the the major solution. And then secondly, homeschooling is a, is a good idea as well, the only thing is, it's not a luxury that a lot of people have, because, you know, you have to work, and the economy is ridiculous here, you know? A single-income household is very, very, very hard to manage, just even buying basic groceries now. So having to pay somebody to homeschool your child, or one of the parents stays home and homeschools, isn't really an option for a lot of people. So, but even though that is an option, it's just not really an option for a lot of people, it's not realistic, it's not feasible. So it goes back to just us having our own major institutions and making sure that we have that available for our students. Because I firmly believe, it doesn't matter how many examples we show of the anti-black racism that exists in this here country, in these here school boards, I don't think it's going to change, I don't think it's going to get better. Because, you know, they like to call us the angry black people, but it's, it is the folks that are the angry people, that just don't want black people in these schools, they don't. You're saying that they learn from the liberals, yeah, the prime minister? I mean, there is images of the prime minister, or a former prime minister in blackface, and that's when he was in, in college, I believe. So he said he didn't know better either, which, whatevs, you know, everybody likes to play dumb and say, I didn't know, I didn't know that putting on blackface was offensive, I had no idea, come on, come on. You don't even have to do history to know, okay? So Vanessa, you're saying the sociological imagination then provides us, provides for a conduit to understand how we are seen by others and how it is permissible for us to live in a world it continues? Yep, yep. Can do it by a group system, yeah, Marcus Garvey, Marcus Garvey says get out, yeah. I mean, I think if, for me, and y'all could tell me what you think too, like, but I think for me, if I had young children at this point in life, I wouldn't have them in these schools, I wouldn't. I would find a way to make sure that they're homeschooled. And even if it's a, you know, a virtual school or something like that, and I would only want black, a black teacher or black tutor, I'm, I wouldn't put my kid in these schools, I wouldn't, I wouldn't. There's far too many stories, like I showed you, of even a six, a six-year-old going through it, right? Exactly, yes, Vanessa, you're saying, nope, exactly, I, I would not put my kid in, in these schools, no, I would not do it, God knows, I would not do it. I would find a way, even if I was working all day and I had to come home in the night, I'm spending hours homeschooling my child, my child, if I have to do it myself, before I'm putting them in these institutions here, in this country, that are just baked with anti-black racism. And those is just a few examples, there, this is a drop in the bucket of what goes on here, a drop in the bucket. I could have spent a whole hour giving you nothing but examples, nothing but examples. But I wanted to pull an example of a child to show that this is how early it starts, and by the way, it's even earlier than six, it's five, it's four. And then also going all the way up to teacher and teachers that are black, so just give you a balance of examples. So you're saying that your grandchildren are, are, but the, that more laws have passed on this continent? You see that they want to bring back slavery, yeah? Yeah, oh, if they have virtual schools, okay, even better. But I want a black teacher, even if it's a virtual school, I want a black teacher. Yep, McQueen, you're, you're saying you're more comfortable with a black teacher for your kids? Yeah, I am too. But let me just put a little disclaimer there, as long as that black teacher is not just skinfolk, but is kinfolk, do you know what I'm saying? Because I'm not going to lie, and we can't lie, and we can deny that there are some of us that are, you know, borderline sellouts. So we want to make sure if it's a black teacher, we don't just taking the black teacher because it's a black teacher. We want to make sure we vet them out and understand that they are actually in it for our black child's well-being, and not for the paycheck, so they sell out, right? Exactly, like you said, McQueen, most definitely, we, we do. And, you know, so, family, it's, man, it's really disheartening. Because like I said, when I think about me going through it back in my day, and still seeing it going on, attending town halls and listening to these students talking about it, being attacked by teachers, teachers in there writing the N-word on the board, and everybody having a kiki about it, and all of those things going on in the schools? Okay? Other students are in the class, and we need to realize that the same, that some of our blacks, folks execute their masters bidding. Other students are in the class and we need to realize that the same, that some of our blacks, uh, folks execute their masters bidding. I'm just saying, some of them are, some of them are. I would, and you know, the problem is, and Vanessa can can co-sign because she she's in Toronto as well. The problem is, there aren't many black teachers. There aren't. And that's the other thing. To the black teachers out here, when you see this happening, don't be silent, don't be silent. You speak up for these black students as well. Do not be a sellout to the school system. This is, yeah, exactly. This is business opportunities for for black people uh, to make black organization institutions and group systems. Exactly. Like, we need to adopt the Tulsa mentality. Like, if anybody remembers the days of Tulsa, they were like, "Alright, you don't want me in in that neighborhood or in that area? We're gonna go ahead and build our own." And they were thriving. And it bothered, it burned the folks' bridges so bad that they came and burned the whole thing down. So yeah, we need to go back to that mentality, where we are pooling in our resources, our brilliance, our everything, and building our own institutions. That's what we need to do. We need our own hospitals, schools, everything black. Let us just separate and have our own. That's what I feel. And I feel like that, to me personally, is the only solution. The only solution, it's the only thing that's gonna work, is us having our own institutions for our children that are our future, one hundred percent. And you made a very good point by saying that's why a lot of students drop out. They feel like they have no other recourse. It's like, what's the point? I'm not safe here. I'm, you know, I'm I'm getting out of here. I I'm just not even gonna bother going to school. I'll just go work somewhere or I'm just gonna go run the streets and what have you, you know? They don't allow us in. Yes, oh, yes. Vanessa St. Louis, uh, my partner, Black People United for Change. And she's talking about the petition we put out lobbying for an anti-black hate crime bill, which at the end of the day, they gave us a whole bunch of word salad answers, but the short answer was, "No, you're not getting it." So we are gonna look at what we can do now to continue that fight because I definitely am not giving up. I'm not giving up. They don't want things to change. That's right, Vanessa. They don't want things to change. It's baked in. How are you gonna, how are you gonna hire a teacher who puts on blackface? What's the vetting process? What's the vetting process when you hire teachers that are the folks? And uh, and and to say that he didn't know that blackface was offensive, right? Like, really? Really? So if you're hiring teachers who feel very comfortable to go into a school in blackface, and let's just say for argument's sake, he didn't know, what does that say about your school system? What does that say about your process? What does that say about the level of baked-in anti-black racism within your school? And how do you stop the bleeding, right? You can educate bait, uh, educators on their bias. More parents, especially young, should participate in the trustee meetings, vote your people, and get to know your te- your trenches. It's true. I agree, JJ. I one hundred percent agree. Sorry, I just want to read more of what you guys are saying and my, I don't know why my system is really acting up today. I'm so sorry, you guys. Um, slavery won't last three minutes in the US. They see how black people get down when we stand for something. That is so true. I will say that about the US, man. You guys really know how to unite about a cause. I'll tell you right now. And that's one thing that's severely, sorry about that, that's severely lacking in this country, is the lack of unity here, the lack of, there's far too many people that are like, "I don't want to mess up my my cushy situation here, so I'm gonna just be quiet." And you know, some of them are swirlers, if you know what I mean. So you know, they want to just, you know, uh, keep up, keeping up with the uh, the folks and they don't want to, you know, mess anything up, you know, so they they stay quiet. So yeah, there's a lot of that going on too. Yeah, so i- it's it's really bad. It's really, really bad. Two trillion, oh, wow, okay, so you're saying, uh, black people spend a year in in Canada? But like I said, two trillion here. Yep, time to unite. I agree. It is one hundred percent time to unite. Unite is the deal. That's what we have to do. We have to unite. That is the main thing. Unity. Unity is what we need. We need to be able to come together. And, oh, funding is a great idea too. Yep, we need funding. We need funding. But you you know, Vanessa, you know how difficult getting funding is around these parts, especially for black people, okay? But if we were to get the funding, we could build our own schools. And you know what's gonna happen? What's gonna happen? It, let's just, let's just set the stage. Supposing all of us black people said, "You know what? We're so done. We're over this. We're gonna go build our own. We're gonna do a Tulsa. We're gonna Tulsa the moment." What do you think will happen? What do you think will happen? I know what I think will happen. I feel like there's gonna be all of these complaints about, "Oh, so you only doing thing for black people? That's racist. You only want a black people here? Only black people? Only black students are allowed here? That's racist." You know that's what's gonna happen. Yeah, Vanessa's like, "They'll burn it down." Yeah, it'll be a repeat of Tulsa. So so what are we supposed to do? We're supposed to be in these schools or have our kids in these schools and go through that? Or are we supposed to build our own? It's like, which one do you want? You don't want us in the schools. You make sure our children know that you don't want us in the schools. You got these junior anti-black racists running around attacking our students and what have you. Then you got teachers that are showing up in blackface and writing the word on the board and what have you. Then you have faculty and staff members that are getting attacked by people with anonymous, you know, hate mail and what have you. And there's even teachers that are being physically attacked by students and called the N-word. So um, if we decide we want to take our N-word and go build our own, what's the problem? But they would have a problem. Do you know why? Because they're afraid. They're afraid that we, we know, us in numbers, the power, it just keeps going up. And they are terrified of that, terrified. Oh, so you think black people hesitate because of funding? Yeah, 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 they do. They do. There are some that do for sure. I agree with you there. Yep, the sociological imagination. Yep, yep. Understand how we are seen by others and how it is permissible for us to live in the world. That is facts. That is facts, Vanessa. Yes, yes, but tell me, family, I'm saying the only solution for us is separating and having our own major institution, our own school systems. What do you think is the solution? To me, that's the only viable solution. Because in theory, homeschooling is also a solution, but it's just not an option for everybody. So you're saying who they have to dump on when that happens? Yep, if we, if we go, whose ingenuity, yep, will they capitalize on? Well, that's their business. That is their business. They can capitalize on their own and leave us be. And let us go and and thrive and and take our black excellence elsewhere. Like, too bad for them. You know, I mean, there's no way. Black professionals are underrepresented in the school and health system. Even black patients get mistreated, yep, in healthcare. They don't uh, get proper treatment. That is true. That's a whole other segment that I'll definitely be covering. And not only that, the black doctors and nurses are are mistreated as well and abused by um, the, some of the patients that are the folks. You know, like, you don't, I don't want an N-word touching me. And they're willing to risk their whole life, you know, or their health. And because they don't want a black person touching them. So yeah, it it goes both ways. Black people in the profession and then black patients. So yep, that is true as well. So that's what I'm saying. That's another major institution that we need. That's, you know, only employed by black nurses, black doctors, black surgeons, black uh, specialists, black administrative staff, just blackity, black, black, black. That's it. That's what has to happen. I mean, how, how long do we have to continue to report on this kind of thing, see this kind of thing before we realize it is time for us to stop trying to uh, integrate or live with it or what have you, when we don't have to? We don't. Oh, Ms. Vanessa, the colored hockey league, that hockey originated from black men, okay? That's, that's new. And yes, it was a black man that created the slapshot. Absolutely. Goalie tending, yep, look it up. Look it up. It is black people. Yeah, so you're thinking that you're saying that they'll live through us? Yeah, I mean, they already do, don't they? Everything that we've invented, everything that we do look like, everything, everything. So yeah, yeah, that is facts. But again, I ask, what should we do? Have our own major institution, right? That, to me, is what I think uh, is the only solution, truly. Because like I said, I could have spent a whole hour just giving you example upon example from each school district um, of of this that's going on. But at the end of the day, all of those examples only point to one thing, which is, it still exists. It's not changing. Uh, there's a rise in the amount of of this that's going on in the school system. So the only people that need to change the way they're doing things is us. Because they are not gonna change. The systemic racism is not going to get better. I don't care how much education. They want to keep talking about D E I training and, no. N O. It's not going to change anything, okay? Let miss me with that, miss me with that all the way. It is not going to change. So we are the ones that have to change the way that we're doing things. Yes, Vanessa says, "Leave while we can or segregate ourselves." Yep, that's what I say. I'm I'm down for it. And trust me, there's a lot of the folks that uh, would also be down for it. Yep, some of our people are stubborn and complacent. I can't li- I can't disagree with you there. There are some that are. There definitely are some that are. They want to just stay in the cushy comfort of the, you know, their life and and they don't want to, you know, to fumble their bag and all of that stuff. And that's fine. More power to you. Me? If it's my child, mm-mm, my child's not going to them schools. Nope. We are the true innovators of society and everyone else eats and profits off us. Time to end that. Yeah, yeah, well, we know this, right? As black people, we know this. Yes, the inclusion part of D E I does not include us. No, no, no. And like I said, even if a black person is coming, because there are some black people that teach it, like, they'll hire a black person to come and teach it. Trust me, could you imagine? I can totally see the amount of eye-rolling that probably goes on, the amount of people that are like, "Oh, gosh." You know, uh, I'm, you know, I'm sure there's some teachers that pretend to be interested and they're not really interested. They're just doing it because it's something that they're told to do, that it's mandatory, that they sit through these trainings and what have you. But I can only imagine when some of them leave there and go home and be like, "Oh, this N-words. Nothing but all this N-word stuff. I don't care about these N-words. I'm not gonna do anything to change." You know, you know that's going on. Pretty words in the book of legislation, but the living experience is something different. Indeed, indeed. So again, I say, I say, we as black people need to have our own institutions, have our own major institutions. Let us stop trying. Let us stop complaining. Let us stop filing, you know, complaints with the Cana- Canada Human Rights Commission, which is also a waste of time. Let us focus, like, shift our whole focus on building for ourselves. Shift our whole mindset to Tulsa, to even Africville. They were, they, go look up Africville. These people were left with nothing. They they wouldn't even come and pick up their garbage. They had no water, nothing but sewage, but they still managed to make a community for themselves. And that also angered the folks. So what did they do? They bulldozed them out of there. So my point is, is that no matter what adversity we face, we are capable of building for ourselves. We can take the smallest thing and make it big. So that's where we need to stay in our minds. We need to get rid of the enslaved mentality within us. And we need to start looking at, okay, this isn't changing. We need to change. So let us work towards that. And that's where we need to go. Exactly. How much research do they need? Well, clearly, they need a lot of research, Vanessa. They do. Um, yeah, they're complaining about immigrants. That's true. Yep, they don't want to see other communities advance. And I'll be doing a thing about the Avalanche Avengers and how they've ascended wanting to separate a specific province so that they uh, you know, are separate from the country of Canada. That's a whole other story. Stay tuned for that one. But yeah, family, I mean, I'm not gonna take up too much more of your time. I really just wanted to show y'all my American brothers and sisters and people in Canada who may not know. But if you don't know, you're clearly living under a rock of the anti-black racism in the schools here in Canada. Um, yes, we do need a a a black funding institution, absolutely. And you know, there are some that say, "Oh, we, we're, you know, we're gonna give you uh, funding for black-owned businesses and black-owned that." And let me tell you, the amount of red tape involved in that, the amount of um, uh, I guess, uh, requirements. And at the end of the day, what they say they're giving you, by the time they strip it down, you're not getting much. You're not. So that's also a lie. So we do need black funding institutions. That is true. Exactly, exactly. This highlights the importance of having our own institutions. I will say it until thy kingdom come. We need our own institutions. It is paramount. We need it. Like, we one hundred percent need it. Uh, you know, it it's, it's, it is so problematic. Thank you, Renz. I, trust me, it is my lease in life. I will keep bringing to you live what is going on in this here country, okay? I'm gonna keep it coming. Thank you for always tuning in. And uh, you know, I'm going to love you all and leave y'all and just say thank you again for hanging out with me for forty-seven minutes. And I'll be back tomorrow, same time, same channel. And uh, Renz, I will be here to expose yet again. So keep it locked. But until next time, everybody, please, please be safe. I shall see you again. Love you back.